I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The father, we just thank you for the opportunity to serve you and serve the citizens of this town. We just pray for your blessings as we conduct the business of the city tonight. We pray for unity as we make those decisions. Christ name, amen.
A copy of the agenda in front of him. I don't think there's anything that needs to be changed. Is there Doug?
[inaudible]
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you.
You owe me a prayer.
[inaudible]
Come on, James. Minutes from our prior meetings, the June 16th meeting, we all should have had a chance to read over that. Unless there's something that needs to be changed, I undertake the motion to approve as well.
As I know.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. No statements due to the fiscal year 2013 closeout, so there won't be any financial voting necessary tonight. So move right on to citizens delegation. I don't know anything from the Mitchell County Palom Development Authority except that they're thrilled to have their new tenant in the building, Deidre Dawes. And I know they're excited about that, and she's had a bang-up week. I know she's been very successful. I've talked to her. She's been very excited and very grateful to the city and to the JDA and everybody who's come to support her. That's Rhonda Hilliard. I know they're talking to some other potential tenants for other parts of the building, but other than that, I don't know any.
Steven, can I?
Yeah.
Say a couple things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it was an awful lot of work done to get them situated for Rhonda and Deidre Dawes. And I want people to really understand that from the initial contact, the JDA, Nicole Hilliard, Laura Beth Tucker, and myself met with Rhonda, and we had some very good advantages. An awful lot has been said about the numbers over there, the cost over there, the actuals over there. But we had actual numbers for the electric bill to present to Rhonda. While the building has a single meter, that space has its own, a meter reader, if you will. So we were able to quote her actual numbers so she knew what electric was going to be coming into it. And from her perspective, those numbers were half of what she's paying at her other location, which is by no means twice the size.
Right.
So she was very pleased to have that happen. Along those same lines, the JDA has spent several hundred dollars repairing bathrooms that need to be done in that space. AC units were thoroughly cleaned and inspected to make sure they were running at proper capacity. I was over there for an hour and a half today with Ricky Mash looking at some plumbing issues. So the JDA is stepping up every time and making sure that what's in that building is running properly and that a fair deal is being presented to any tenant. A couple of weeks ago, Neil Hilliard, Nicole Hilliard, and myself spent two and a half hours in there in the evening tracking electrical lines for Dr. Cruz's base. You've got a 100-year-old building at 100,000 square feet with, I'm sure, more than 100 renovations over the time. And it's always that, when you're trying to find something, you find a point of reference and you spend hours trying to track it back. And that's all done as a volunteer effort to make sure that everything is done properly. We were fortunate, we had, George Power was here for five hours on, this past Friday for a in-depth energy audit. He looked at every single piece of equipment that's in the restaurant, as well as throughout the building, the 14 different AC units in there, getting model numbers, getting serial numbers to help determine their age, how efficient or inefficient they are. What we can do when another space is rented and no meter is there is based on the information he can provide, be able to quote a more fair and accurate price on anything. So all of those take an awful lot of time and effort, and the JDA is making sure that happens. And we'll do that with any prospect. And if it's not in the hand building, the chamber will do it somewhere else in town. So if someone's looking to open something in Pelham, there are resources here that will help you and make that happen. The city was very helpful with Rhonda as she was looking at her needs for the building. So everybody really went out of their way to make it happen fairly, accurately, and actually very quickly to get it running, and we'll do the same with others. So I don't think people always understand that when you have, again, that size and that age, that it's not always a simple thing to resolve. The [inaudible] for Dr. Cruz's base is actually inside the building on the third floor. He's been in a unit before. A unit that is not only an AC compressor, hot cover as well. So there's those things that no [inaudible] aren't, but they are actually advanced, back to [inaudible]. I just want to understand that they talk about goes, understanding really is to make everything happen. They make a volunteer hour to really ensure and wear fair and proper.
You mentioned the utilities being reasonable, very reasonable. Directly. Red was very reasonable.
Very reasonable. They're the [inaudible] considerate [inaudible] for the location.
Yes, good. That's good enough, too.
And that red was, with the, the prior tenant was dropped and offered, was dropped for three months and offered at a lower rate to continue on and decline. So again, the JDA works with people to make this stuff happen. I just thought that needed to, I wish I had known that.
I appreciate that, Kent. Thank you.
Sure. You have to keep standing for the Pelham Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah.
Come on. Sorry. Well, switch gears. Again, an awful lot of last month has been, a lot of my time has been spent over there, but not all of it. Of course, we're working on the play in tandem with Pelham Main Street. It's a great benefit. It is economic development from what it raised to our community. It draws new people in. The last play that we had, we brought people from as far away as Atlanta. So there are people coming in to see our town, and they're buying gas, and they're eating here. So the play does more than just entertainment and offers a lot of other options as well. Of course, we're starting to ease in, getting ready for the Wildlife Festival. That's kind of at initial stages, but that's going on as well. Chamber itself, we, we still financially struggle. Our power bill was $782 last month for one AC unit, really. And so it can be difficult for us to keep up with all that. This last month, between the Mitchell County Development Authority, the Camilla Chamber of Commerce, and the Pelham Chamber of Commerce, I've been telling you, we've been looking at a rejuvenation of a shop local, support local campaign. We had the first meeting last month on that. We invited 65 different businesses. 14 people representing 10 businesses actually showed up for the initial meeting. They were very enthusiastic. I'm glad to say that four of those businesses were from Pelham, and people want to do something to move forward. It saddens me that you invite 65 business owners and only 10 are represented. I do have to say, reaching out to people, much like Stephen's letter, that it used to be that going above and beyond was the norm of what people did, and we're going to have to do more of that. And if we want to improve, grow, strengthen, really get people to commit to supporting local, then we're going to have to have all sides of it involved. I can say shop local all day long. It's going to take more than just saying it. We've got other people involved. So there is another meeting scheduled in August. We're going to have some people come that have done shop local campaigns. There will be some committees formed, and we'll pursue it as heavily as we can, but encourage everybody here and anybody that's watching to be part of the solution, to help us make Pelham stronger and grow and provide an opportunity for more jobs and for a better economy. It's going to take all of us to do that. So that's our big focus right now. So that's kind of what we got going on in a nutshell.
Any questions for Kent?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Thanks for being here. Excuse me. Have you got a report from Ernest, Doug?
I do not.
Okay, I don't either. That's unusual. But I will say Ernest is spending a lot of his time to working, and I'll say more about this later in my report, but working on the fundraising aspect of the Pelham Carnegie Library. He's on that board as well. And I know they've got another lunch Wednesday, and that may be where he is tonight, I don't know.
He has sent what he would cover tonight to the newspaper, so it will be in the newspaper Wednesday.
Okay.
Under his regular area newspaper.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Mayor puts in, Administration's move.
All right.
We have several items tonight. Of course, first we have our Police Department, Fire Department, Code Enforcement, and Animal Control reports. We'll just have a chance to look both of those.
I commented during this morning, the Code Enforcement officers seem to be very, very busy.
Yes.
See a lot going on in the community, as far as the lands, and then cleaning up and everything, and getting that [inaudible].
Certainly is a challenge, especially in the summer here. Moving from that, we have the, are there any other comments? If anybody has. We have a resolution for the fees for rezoning variance and conditional use requests. And I'll read this resolution. Whereas the City of Pelham is a municipality incorporated pursuant to the laws of the State of Georgia, and whereas fees for the administration, inspections, and submittal of rezoning variance or conditional use purposes required under the provisions of the Pelham Planning and Zoning Ordinance shall be collected by the zoning administrator in advance of proceeding of such applications, and whereas these fees shall be established and adjusted by the mayor and city council to cover the cost of administration, inspection, and supervision resulting from the enforcement of the Pelham Planning and Zoning Ordinance. Be hereby resolved if the mayor and council prove that the fee for submittal of the above mentioned applications is set at $350. The reason for this is we've not addressed these fees in several years, and of course it has gotten much more expensive for us to be able to do these rezonings as far as having to generate signs that must be posted, as well as, you know, running ads in the newspaper, and of course the time that we have to put into researching these things to make sure that they're in compliance with, of course, our local and state laws. And due to that, we have come up with what we believe is a fair price to cover that. This is not a moneymaker for the city. We're not getting rich off this, but we do need to cover the cost to make sure we can continue to do this and make sure our planning and zoning is done properly for the city. So with that, I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Second, Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Come on, Brown.
It's okay. It's fine.
The next thing I have is alcohol license request from Omar Raya's Beer for all-premise packaged beer. We do have, of course, our letter from the Police Department where they've done checks and all of this to be sure that this is something that would be, that he would qualify for this, and that it would be something reasonable to go into this location. And this, of course, is for a, an existing, I guess, kind of grocery convenience store that we currently have in Pelham.
And this is packaged beer, right?
Yes, that's correct. And of course, this is for the remainder of 2014. This is something that will be revisited as all of them are at the beginning of the year next year. So I'll make a motion that we accept this license request.
I second it. Second, Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I also have the renewal for our lease agreement with Georgia Pines for the facility in our industrial park. Mr. City Attorney, this is, of course, something that we've done many times, and you've reviewed it, I know. Will we need to read any of this for our public record? We have this as public.
Well, it is public record. I reviewed it, and there's nothing to change it all to, so I would approve it.
I'll make a motion that we continue and approve the lease agreement with Georgia Pines.
Second. Second, Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. If you pass, it's all right. Still got more?
Yes. And the last item I have is an introduction of the Cruelty to Animals Ordinance. It brought our attention that there has been some need for this, and of course, looking there are, of course, state laws and everything governing this, we want to make it a little more clear as to how this needs to be handled within the City of Pelham and give us the opportunity to really enforce this better. So with that, we have this ordinance, which I am sponsoring, and it will be available here for the reading at City Hall. This is just an introduction to it. We will actually be voting on this at the next meeting. So we just want to make sure everyone's aware that this is here, it's available if anyone wants to read it at City Hall and move forward from there. City Attorney, would that constitute a first reading for this?
I think it would. And looking at this, the main thing, we'd say that if they're charged first time, there's a fine with it, but the subsequent, if it comes back again, especially if animals have been of high and aggravated nature, and animals have been harmed or killed, then it could, it could lead to imprisonment. So it does, it does graduate in its sanctions. It doesn't start off as severe, but it does allow for the judge to do more if, if the circumstances are there, and it's a repeat, repeat of them.
All right. That'll be all that I have.
You have some additions?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, nothing on public works. All right, well, Doug, City Mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, we applied last year for a CDBG grant for sanitary sewer improvements, and we were awarded that grant, somewhere in the neighborhood of around $459,000. We applied for $500,000. That was the amount that we, we were granted, awarded. And we're happy to get that $459,000. We had eight companies interested in bidding. Five of them actually did send a bid. The, the high bid was over $700,000 for this project, and the low bid was $469,000. It will be next month by the time Stevenson and Palmer have finished their task of reviewing this company, make sure everything is in place and in order. And at that time, at the regular meeting next month, City Council will vote on a warning to bid to this low bid or perhaps one of the other ones. Three of them were very, were within $3,000, I want to notice. So we've got three of them that are fairly close there. And this will be for sanitary sewer improvements with Wilson Street basically in the middle of the neighborhood area that this is going to be accomplished. It's not going to be something that the general public is going to be able to see. You'll see some trucks running up and down the road, but everything is done underground and inside of the sewer mains, which are large enough for them to get their cameras and equipment and sometimes people into. So as far as excavating, unless an area around a manhole cover needs to be reset, you really won't see any earth moving or, you know, anything that you would see where we're spending almost half a million dollars at, but it, it means a lot. We did the same thing with the grant before last, just down West Railroad here. You might remember that whenever it rained, those yards between here and Mitchell Street flooded an awful lot. And when you, when you say sanitary sewer system, this includes your wastewater, too, in a lot of cases. So a lot of improvements were made there, and we've made it through a lot of these torrential downpours without any yards flooding down here. So that, that was a, a very good move for the council to decide to apply for that grant and that area.
So even though the, the low bid is a little higher than the actual grant amount, they'll, well, what, make adjustments or something to it?
Yes, sir. You're right. The way, the way this project is, is designed, it's a find and fix order. So in other words, we're, we don't, we won't know until we get under the ground of what condition a lot of the pipes are in. You know, there was a little preliminary inspection done on some of them, but, you know, miles of pipe, you can't, can't see at all. But since it's a find and fix type project, we will find items that need repairing and fix them, and then when the money is, is close to running out or is exhausted, then, then we can stop. So it's really, even though that, that area is targeted as the project area, we may not be able to, then we may be able to do everything in that entire area depending on, on the cost. But we should not go over what we were granted for as the, the grant goes. We just started doing this about three, three grants ago where we did the find and fix type project. That way it kept, you know, a lot of time and money saved from not having to rebid and do a lot of change orders and that sort of thing. I'm glad you asked that. That's, that's important. I know I have sat here three meetings and talked about the start date for the Martin Luther King building and changing up the road. I am told that it is a, a fact that I can repeat tonight, that the 29th, which would be a week from tomorrow, is the start date. Last week I was told that it was tomorrow. That was just an error that they may not remember which week was week, week was what. But the equipment should be moving in later on this week, and starting next Tuesday, they will be working first on the, on one side of the road from Hand to Castle Berry, because that is the road that's got to be built. Councilman Brown pointed out, his DOT experience, that road after several years, I mean, several repavings was higher than the curb, so got to build that down. So it'll be one-lane traffic in that area, and they'll finish the other side, and then they'll move on to proceed all the way to Cemetery Road with the repaving. Once they leave there, there's going to be several other areas that we're going to try to spend the majority of our sponge money on around town, but I don't have that list for you yet, but I have a proposal as to which roads need the, the most care. But I'm saying one more time, this Tuesday coming up, next week, the 29th, we can expect that to get started. That's all I had, unless y'all have some questions for me.
I just want to say that when you get started with this, with the sanitation grant working on the road, sometimes they might find where the pipe or something collapsed on the ground. But if we have to go in, the contractor has to go and do some digging, we need to make sure they can paint that thing right, because that's why we have a lot of problems with the dropping and all the dips in the road we got, they come from the compacts, so.
Like Cannon's.
When they get started on that.
Cannon's bad over the hill.
That's what he's talking about. That's exactly what happened here.
When they get started, you know, give me a call, I'll go check on it.
Okay.
Know how it's wrong with it.
That was, that very thing was brought up at the, at the pre-bid meeting that we had the week prior to the opening of the bids. And that may have been why there were several of them that was here for the pre-bid meeting that didn't.
That's the previous CDBG grant, I mean, CDBG project that caused those dips on Cannon Street.
Well, the project, it wasn't right, right. It was settled, we were going to drop.
Right.
And then we got problems.
Yeah, yeah.
We won't be dealing with that company again.
Yeah. Any other questions for Doug? Comments?
I heard him say, calling.
Yeah. Retorted.
I need to get out of the way. The railroad, I don't guess anymore.
Not this week. Now, last week I heard from David Bowden from Atlanta where we sent all the material, and he phoned to tell me that everything was in order and that he would be in Pelham soon himself to examine the tracks and proceed. So I've not heard anything from the railroad. Basically, he thought that that still would be this month, that they would be here from Atlanta to do their part of the, of the job.
Anything else for Doug? Mr. City Attorney, can you do that?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I want to bring the council up to date on the library. You all may have seen the article in the paper that Ernest wrote informing everyone about what was going on in the library. Our fundraising efforts now, there's been about $12,200 that has been either given online or mailed in as contributions towards the project. It does not include the amount of money that Ernest and the, and the lunches and things are, are bringing in. There's more than that. And I want to say on, on television for sure that I greatly appreciate the City School Board in their, once again, giving $6,000 to the library. This is the second year in a row that they have made a contribution to the library, and especially appreciative, knowing that they are under such financial strains as we are too, but they are still doing that, and they believe in the library, and I appreciate that very much. So we are in a position now, moving forward there, to go ahead and begin work on the roof. I've also applied for a grant that I'll hopefully hear from in the next month or so that would, you know, those combined with all the people still giving, but I got another contribution today, will be in a good position to not only fix the roof, but repair and repaint the molding around the top and the exterior, all the windows replaced or re, or repaired, repair the plaster inside, and repaint the entire interior of the library, and basically give it a complete facelift so that it can carry on for years to come. The next idea that I believe that we will be looking at once that is all completed is seeking funds either by grant or contributions for an elevator in that building, which would enable us to be able to use the second floor, which is a great meeting space, but just cannot be used at this time because it's difficult for many to get up those steep steps. So that's where we are on the library. Ricky Mash will be doing the work on the library. Starting in about four weeks, you'll see some work going on on the roof. It will not be a brand-new roof. Lisa Riggsby, who is the Director of the DeSoto Trail System, sent me an email the other day, actually Friday, I think it was, of a possible grant for a new roof that we might be in a good position to receive, so I'll be applying for that grant. As the mayor, the city charter requires that the mayor serve as the chairman of the library board, and this council has voted on and selected the following board members who are tremendous in helping us. Lynette Harper, Dr. Jason Smith, Mrs. Valerie Neal, Ernest Barfield, Marcia Walton, and Lenora Basso all serve on the board. And I want to say a word about the, I don't know all the people that are involved helping Ernest with this fundraising effort that he's doing with the box lunches and all those things, but I know there's a tremendous amount of money he's from, and help he's getting from First Baptist, he's using their kitchen, and just really appreciate the outpouring of support and really, and Jason Smith and Gail Smith, or, excuse me, for setting up the website. Go find me, and Gail and I worked on getting some stationery done the other day for the library, which we did in Renaissance Printing, and Camilla did these for us, which I think are really pretty drawings that are actually computer-generated drawings. I'll pass them around. I think it's very good-looking. These are going to be the thank you notes that Gail is actually volunteer, Gail Smith has volunteered to write all the thank you notes, which is a lot of them to do for everybody who is giving money to the library. And honestly, we have, we have sent out emails, but we really haven't really tried hard. And this is just what has come in from the newspaper article and just some emails and things like that. So the support of the library is tremendous, and it's, as Doug and I were talking about earlier, today is really humbling, you know. know. We're very pleased. It's heartwarming to know that so many people care so much about that building and about that facility. And, you know, when the city had to cut funding of $14,000, it was simultaneous with the issues that we were having with the building. And so this is, donations are going towards building renovation, but also continuing operations of the library. It's not just the building. We want to continue to operate the library, and it's going to take everybody's help in doing so. So that's where we are on the library right now. As I say, in another four weeks or so, we'll start seeing some work being done over there. I appreciate Doug getting some city employees over there to clean up around the library very good. We need to be able to get all those bushes and things cut way back so that we could get to the building. They were way overgrown anyway, and that will help us to be able to get to where we need to, all the structure when we start doing work on it. So, any questions on that? The next fundraiser is Wednesday. It is barbecue sandwiches, barbecue lunch, pulled pork sandwiches.
Okay, the breakfast one is again after that.
Yeah, I, I can't thank Ernest. I tell you, Ernest Barfield has really done a good job and is working hard on that. And as I say, I'm not even familiar with all the people that he has got involved. He's got some board members, and then of course, a lot of volunteers who are helping. And I don't dare name names, but I know there's a lot of folks. And I just want to say, I appreciate everybody very much for doing that. That's all I have in my report tonight, unless anybody has anything else for me. All right. Well, that's it. If that's all, I want to pay a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, my Councilman Parker. All those in favor, get up and leave.